Stand please for the President of the House.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, individual and liberty just as a whole.
Good morning. I'd like to call to notice for the public that there's a copy of the Doberman's Act here on the North Wall of the Legislature. Also, I'd like to note that there is electronic defibrillator in the back of the room for help reasons if anybody needs that for any purpose. And also, I'd like to ask anybody that if you have a cellphone, will you please turn it off, put it on vibrate or silence? With that, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 30, 2018. Item B is to call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 4, 2018, as a date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none. We'll move on to the resolutions. We have resolutions D through G. What's the will of the Board?
Move the approval.
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Under protest, item H is a protest, the assessment of the interest in penalties for Lovely Skin, Inc. Mr. Goodwill.
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. H and I are kind of related. You can probably take them the same way. It's the same ownership group and the issue is the same in both instances. For both of these businesses, we received the return after the May 1 deadline. And I've had some correspondence with the accountant who indicates that his client signed the return and says she mailed it on the 29th of April prior to the filing date. That's the Sunday before the May 1. It was the Sunday before the May 1 filing date. When we get returns, we always scan not only the return but the envelope it came in. And the postmark date for the envelope in which the return came was 11:00 PM on May 2 after the deadline. So, we issued a penalty notice and the taxpayer has filed a protest. In the past, the taxpayers, these taxpayers have been timely filed. What I can tell you is filing, the filing date through state regulation in this program is controlled by the postmark date. Now, I suppose you could decide that the property owner has filed the returns timely. To do that, what you would have to do is take the protester at their word that they mailed it the 29th and that the postmark, that the post office hung on to it for three days before they put a postmark date on it. I can't say that's impossible. That's certainly not been our experience. We had some discussion with somebody from the local post office who say they pick up every day and try and get them postmarked by that day. But that's the background for this one. I think the accountant for the taxpayer would like to say a few words. Or would you?
I did, I would.
Okay.
I'm Leo Pans, CPA for the Slessingers, Lovely Skin and Slessinger. I'm CPA, been doing the tax returns for the county assessor for the past 10 years. We've always filed timely. We have an internal log. We scan everything. We sign it and send it out to the client. And it was my error not calling the client and saying, please watch for these. Please see that they're timely filed. There was some period of time over the weekend. And we, our mail log does indicate that we did mail it well in advance. We mailed it April 26. It was signed, and I think it was mailed the same day according to our mail log. They received it, signed it in advance of the May 1 deadline. He is correct. It was postmarked the 2nd. I'm just, my speculation is, is that it got tied up in the mail. It did not get postmarked until the 2nd. And I'm begging, asking, requesting reasonability for abatement of the penalty. State of Nebraska, Department of Revenue, which I deal with, has an abatement form. They have a request for abatement. IRS, in dealing with them on a continuing basis, they take facts and circumstances under consideration for abatement. And I'm asking the Board to do the same thing. Respectfully request abatement in this case based on the facts and circumstances. Thank you.
If I may have one last word. He's absolutely correct about, for other tax programs, the Department of Revenue saying, yeah, you can, you can abate the penalty. The statutes dealing with personal property penalties are much more mandatory in nature and much more limiting toward county boards. And the only reason I would say that, I guess I'll speculate as to why, I think I've been around long enough and I'm old enough to be able to speculate on that. And that is, and that is in some county boards, and I can think of one where we ran the assessment office when I was with the State of Nebraska, not far from here, where the fix was always in with the Board. And my suspicion is the Legislature didn't necessarily want to provide untrammeled discretion to make personal property penalties for favored taxpayers go away. But that said, if you believe that the return was timely filed despite the postmark being after the deadline, by all means, you can, you can do something to remove the penalty.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. What kind of penalty are we talking about?
I think for one of the taxpayers, I did kind of a thumbnail calculation. It's 10% of the taxes that would be due. So, working through this, I think one of the accounts had, oh, here. One of the accounts reported $363,000 in property value multiplied by about a 2.6% tax rate is 9,400 and change in taxes. A 10% penalty is $945 on one account. The other account reported $411,000 in property, same tax rate for $10,600 sum in taxes. A 10% penalty represents about a $1,068 penalty. So, if you add it all up, it's just a shade north of $2,000 total penalty.
Okay. And if I get this chronology right, it was supposed to be in on the 1st or the 30th?
May 1 is good enough. And if it had a postmark date, May 1, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Okay. So, for $2,000, we're talking, you got it two days after. You would normally have expected it to be, is that right?
Well, we, we get, we tend to get a lot of stragglers that first week of May. But if they have a May 1 postmark date, it's, it's good enough. We have less of this now because so many people are starting to go to online filing. That's, I mean, that's pretty cut and dried. But, but we still have people that mail. And so, when we get returns that first week of May, we look carefully at, at the envelope they came in to be sure that they were timely filed. And this one was not.
On these two particular accounts, has it ever happened before?
No. But nobody's ever late until the first time they are.
I understand. I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, what we're dealing with here. It's kind of a...
This is, this is not a, this is not a longstanding taxpayer that has been a problem child in terms of filing on time. And, you know, most of them, to the extent that the penalty seems harsh, it actually kind of does, over 10 years of observation in this office, that they act, the penalty actually does, what it kind, what it kind of is meant to do is people file late once, they get the penalty once, and then we don't usually have to worry about it. I mean, I can't think of really any repeat offenders off the top of my head with late filing penalties. I mean, it just doesn't happen very much.
Right. Okay. I make a motion to abate it.
There's a motion by Commissioner Morgan to abate it. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
If I may, Mr. Chair, for both items, H and I?
Both items, H and I?
Yes.
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 Commissioner, okay. Commissioner Duda, I'm just looking to make sure.
If I could, I would like to ask the county attorney to weigh in briefly on what options she sees for us, if that's all right.
Teresa Erick, County Attorney's Office. Thank you, Commissioner. So, the law is, as Mr. Goodwilly stated, and that is, this Board's authority in waiving or getting rid of a penalty is limited to those that are wrongly imposed or wrongly calculated. So, the statute doesn't provide an abatement for tardiness. And the regulation cited by Mr. Goodwilly about the postmark is also accurate, May 1.
Mr. Goodwilly did say that the commercial is treated a little differently.
What's that? I'm sorry, Commissioner?
I thought you said, stated that the commercial, it is stated a little different, the law, the statute, I thought, in the beginning?
No, 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 no. I think what I said was, or may have said was, that this is one of those rare personal property penalty protests where if you believe the return was timely filed, you could actually abate it.
Okay.
Now, to believe it, you have to believe it got mailed the 29th and it went three days without a postmark date. Now, and anecdotally, I have a daughter who lives in Washington, DC, and I have sent her some mail that took like 10 days to get there. And when she finally let me know it did, I said, what the hell did they do with that? You know? And so, I said, when, what was, just out of curiosity, when was the postmark date? Well, the postmark date was the day after I mailed it. So, what the hell they did with it for the remainder of the time, I don't know. But, but, yes, if you want to believe it's, if you want to believe it's timely filed, I guess you could waive the penalty.
Well, I'm believing it's timely filed and maybe they didn't get the postmark on time. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Wait a minute, Jim, wait a minute, because Mark, you got to tell me what you're handling.
Yes, and I'm looking at the calendar. May 1 is a Tuesday. This is 2018 we're talking about, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Tuesday?
No, it'd be a Wednesday, wouldn't it?
The 2nd is a Wednesday.
That's true. Okay. Yeah, May 2 is Tuesday.
So, originally, I was thinking, well, and perhaps you may answer this. Did he mail it at the post office? Did he drop it in a box? Yeah, if you drop it in a box after the pickup time, you could mean late. How did he mail it?
I'm speculating, the office has a holding list tomorrow. I speculate that they dropped it in the mail.
When I'm running against the timeframe, I drive to the post office. And let me rephrase that. My wife is nervous Nellie. She has me drive to the post office.
I wish we had filed it electronically. We're set up for that. And the error has been corrected. We can future file it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Because I'm kind of, I've been there.
Thank you.
But I paid the fine.
If the facts and circumstances hadn't been so precise, I wouldn't be here protesting either. I'd say, you got, but we are so close with the dates and what we did and what we tracked. And I should have made the phone call, but I didn't. And I apologize for that. I respectfully request abatement.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No.
Okay. So, there is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Go forth and say more.
Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Duda voting no. Other Commissioners voting yes.
All right. Appeals. Letter J, appeal of the penalty for Titan Tools. And letter K, appeal of penalty for Titan Tools. Mr. Goodwill.
Yes. Actually, the company we're dealing with here is a company called Southern Carlson that acquired Titan Tools. This is not nearly as dramatic. This is much more the standard that dog ate my return and I didn't file it on time kind of excuse. They, they filed, they're also a late filer. The argument in the protest from the taxpayer is, well, we were busy acquiring this company and their controller thought they filed and we thought they filed and it became a comedy of errors. I would point out, however, that the acquisition of the property was in September of 17. The filing deadline is May 1 of 2018. You'd think you'd have your internal system somewhat sorted out. The other thing I would direct your attention to is that these are electronic filers and we send out a mass email to those who have not yet filed about two weeks or so to go in the filing process. And we did that with the Southern Carlson Company. And we sent the reminder on the 13th of March. And it appears that it was open not once but twice. And we sent the email to the last electronic address for the company from their prior year's filing. So, this is a much more traditional protest where the filing was late. There's really no argument that the penalty was wrongly imposed or incorrectly calculated. They're just saying, we don't want to pay the penalty.
What's the will of the Board?
You're a little more restricted in that regard.
So, there is a penalty. The penalty is wrongfully calculated.
You've got, you've got two possible reasons to abate the penalty. Okay? One is, it's wrongly imposed. And we had an example, the rare example where you had something that you could chew on with that with this past protest because they said they filed on time. Well, if it's filed on time, then the penalty is wrongly imposed. Okay? The other reason you could abate a penalty or alter a penalty is if it were incorrectly calculated. But it hasn't been calculated yet because it goes on to the tax bill that gets sent out in December, and that's pretty automatic. Incorrect calculations are pretty darn rare. So, really here, you're, you're pretty limited, and I'm not sure you have the authority to abate these penalties because they aren't raising the issue of we filed on time. They aren't raising an issue that would affect whether the property, penalty was, was incorrectly applied. They're just saying, well, we're late and we don't feel like paying the penalty. So, could you please make it go away?
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwilly. I'll make a motion and we deny the request.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Does that include adjournment?
Yes.
Then I'll second it.
Includes both items, J and K?
Yes. There's a motion to deny J and K by Commissioner Morgan, and Morgan seconded by Commissioner Duda, and that includes adjournment. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
We're now called to order the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair.
Here. Item 1 is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, October 23. What's the will of the Board?
For approval.
There's a motion by Commissioner Morgan. There's a second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
Item 2 is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens want to comment on Board of Corrections-related matter not listed on the agenda? Seeing none. Item 3 is report from the Corrections Director, Mr. Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you the report for October of this year. I'll draw your attention to enclosure number 1. We are currently over budget so far this fiscal year. We did have the back pay for the FOP contract hit our books in October. So, that's contributed to the, to the overage. Additionally, the contract adjustments for the salaries will, that will be compensated for early next year. We're working with Joe Lorenz to calculate that and make the budget adjustment. 15 individuals were referred to the sanction center. They served a total of 71 days in October. I'm on to enclosure number 2. The Transitional Discharge Center is a new approach that we're taking for individuals who are being, close to being released from custody, who are serving a sentence. These are individuals who, because of their history or their risk, we took a pass on moving them to Community Corrections at the beginning of their sentence due to population pressures, construction projects, et cetera. This is a, we're going to take a second look at people, see how they performed while they were in custody, see if they've stabilized, and make very careful, educated decisions on placing them into what we're calling the Transitional Discharge Center during their last week. This could save us anywhere from 10 to 20 beds per day by moving people their last several days of their sentence over to the work release center. These folks will have much more limited privileges. They won't have access to the community. We will treat them with much more precaution than we do other folks in Community Corrections because these are people who we initially decided were not a good fit for Community Corrections, and we're taking a look at them the second time around to see if we can manage them for their last few days of custody. 24/7 sobriety program had 48 admissions. That program reached an all-time peak high during October where we had 220 individuals assigned to the program. 2,925 breath tests were completed. 18 were positive for alcohol use. There were 10 no-shows. The overall breath test compliance rate was 99%. 39 individuals were monitored for 866 days of SCRAM monitoring. That's the ankle bracelet monitoring for alcohol. There were zero no-shows, zero tampering, and two alcohol violations during October. The overall SCRAM compliance rate was 99.8%. Drug testing. We did 462 saliva drug tests with 18 positive tests and 16 no-shows. We did 12 drug patch testing, tests were submitted, and one positive test was resulted. Work release admitted 45 individuals. Work release clients donated 154 hours of community service to various public and private charitable organizations. House arrest admitted 71 individuals during October. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 26 individuals, and we did have a GED graduate this month in RAP. Corrections programs admitted 50 individuals, and we had one GED graduate in corrections programs as well. 23 individuals moving on to pretrial services were referred to priority prosecution. 235 bed days were saved. 317 individuals were placed on pretrial release. And in total, 1,127 individuals were monitored on pretrial release during the course of October. Moving on to enclosure number 3, compliance. Our first-year data collection for the current audit cycle is nearly complete for Community Corrections and the jail. Auditors from the Nakamoto Group visited the Department of Corrections October 23 through 25 to assess compliance with immigration detention standards. We should be getting the written report from them, their visit shortly, but there were no significant issues raised as a result of that audit. Enclosure number 4, personnel. Our latest new hire class graduated on November 2, and they are on the floors as of this week, having completed their field training. We will begin our next new hire class on December 3. And also, I'm pleased to announce that Andrew Dunning was promoted from the rank of sergeant to lieutenant during this month. On a side note, I conducted interviews with all of the candidates for that position. I was very impressed with the quality of the pool of candidates. We probably will have an opportunity to promote one or two more lieutenants during this current cycle, and I'm very confident in the abilities of those who also interviewed for this position. Enclosure number 5, population. We had 1,625 admissions, 1,686 releases. Our high count was 1322. Our low count was 1250. Our average daily population was 1280. We had a total of 267 custodial sanctioned bed days. The US Marshal population increased. The ICE population remained client, excuse me, remained constant. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. The female population increased, and there were three female housing units open. Enclosure number 6, medical. We had 1,353 intake screenings. There were 476 health and physical assessments completed. Enclosure number 7, mental health. There was 126 initial psychiatric assessments completed. 141 initial mental health assessments were completed. 44 individuals were placed in the infirmary for mental health reasons. We had six referrals to the Board of Mental Health, and three individuals referred to long-term psychiatric facilities. I've added another section to this, to my cover letter of your report each month to catch other items of note that don't fit neatly into our enclosures that are submitted to me from the various departments. And to, to go through that, we're currently reviewing the organizational chart of the Department of Corrections. We should be completed with that by mid-December. This has been a very helpful and educational process for me. I believe this, the goal of this is to organize ourselves in a way where we're, so that we're poised to fit the current challenges that we have and well, as well as hopefully anticipating the challenges that are coming down the line for us. We will begin to fill the leadership vacancies that we currently have after we have that organizational chart revised. The multidisciplinary team, which is a group of people that consists of mental health professionals, security staff who work in our special management of restrictive housing settings, and some administration, meet every week to discuss the welfare and the goings-on of each individual who's placed in restrictive housing. I wanted to bring this to the Board's attention because they recently have added a new step to that process where every- where every thirty days, they bring the inmate, if they're willing and able to come down, to a room and meet with this committee to discuss their progress, discuss the challenges that they're having.
I just have some incremental goals.
Goals for the inmate to be able to move into a less restrictive setting. I was very impressed with the sophistication and the professionalism of our staff in handling these meetings. It was also a very moving experience when you see how profound the challenges are that some of our individuals in our custody face. The delusions, the psychoses, the, the struggles they have just to try and hold things together on a daily basis are awe-inspiring, as is the response of our staff who have to care for these individuals in this sort of an environment. So that, that's a very beneficial process. I'm eager to see how that process plays out and benefits our, both our staff and our inmates in restrictive housing as we move forward. Construction is well underway for our Phase Two of our Public Safety Bond. The first two housing units are closed and are basically tore up in various ways as, as the, as the contractors get in and, and replace a lot of the inner workings of those units. They're obviously in something this complicated, you're going to have a minor obstacle here and there, but those things are to be expected. They're being overcome as we meet them, and the project remains on schedule. And finally, there are many heroic acts that happen at the Department of Corrections on a, on a nearly a daily basis. Lives are saved there for one reason or another, you know, every week. One event stood out to me during the month of October where we had a very close call with an inmate, and I wanted to recognize that Officer Ramon Estvez demonstrated excellent vigilance and took very quick action, resulting in saving the life of an inmate. I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. That's my report. I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Kraft, then Kavanaugh.
Yes. The staff for restrictive housing, are they given any special training?
Yes, they are. They receive a variety of training. They, before they are assigned to those teams, they do at least forty hours of classroom and on-the-job training before they're assigned to that area, and then they receive ongoing specialized training.
Okay. And specialized training, meaning treatment for psychosis and delusional and some mental health counseling aspect?
All of the above, yes.
Okay, including crisis intervention?
Yes. Those are, would, our CIT-trained officers will be.
And, and when do we expect, what is the completion date on the remodeling?
Summer of 2020.
Okay. The issue, I was reading an article in one of the many publications I read. They were talking about contraband, okay? How are we controlling contraband? Are we having any issues with it?
Contraband is always something we have to be on the lookout for. It can be introduced into a facility in a variety of ways. We are, you know, it's become highly complicated in the issue of mail because a lot of substances now are able to be dissolved and then applied to paper, just brushed onto paper, and that takes very careful screening on our part to be able to catch them.
And we are catching it?
We have caught it in the past, yes. We're looking at some other options, probably exploring some options next year to decrease the reliance on paper mail and to minimize that sort of a risk. We also, depending upon a person's history when they're being booked into the jail, you know, the, the level of the, of the search that they go through will be increased if they have risks. If we feel the risk, there may be substances trying to be smuggled in. You know, we, we take every possible precaution that we can without violating people's rights to, to assure that our facility has as little chance as possible of introduction of contraband.
Okay. Peer support. We were discussing peer support at our community mental health meeting yesterday, and I understand the state's making some changes, and I assume you are aware of those changes?
I, I am probably not as up to speed on those as, because we currently don't employ any peer support specialists. We utilize peer support specialists that are employees of the community mental health center.
Okay.
We do have actually in our plan to have our own peer support specialist, so I will make sure I get educated on the changes that the state is making.
Very good. I have no further questions at the moment.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. This is a great report. Just a couple of questions relative to some of the items contained in here. The Nakamoto Group, how did they become involved in examining the immigration?
They are a contractor that the federal government uses to conduct audits of local facilities which house ICE detainees.
And how often do they come in? Sorry?
That, that is a, at least annually. We, there are different types of ICE audits. There are annual audits. There are allegedly random audits that, but because there's not that many facilities that have the capability of housing ICE detainees, we tend to receive more than what we think is our fair share of random audits, but, so at least annually.
Okay. And do they issue a report to us?
We will get a report from them. We do get a report. Basically, they're just assuring that we're safeguarding the, the rights of individuals who are detained and that we're in compliance with all areas of medical and welfare.
And when we receive that, will that become part of one of your monthly reports? Could you make it part of one of them?
I'm not aware, probably a summary of it.
Yeah.
I, I haven't had a chance to review it yet to see how in detail it gets, but yes, I can provide a summary.
That'd be great. That'd be great. The mental health illness diagnosis information that you provide us with is, is great, and I, I just wanted to note in here that apparently in a population which is plus or minus twelve-hundred, we have inmates diagnosed with mental illness, nine oh one, on this chart. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm actually going to be working with our medical provider, and I find this, this is a stat that takes into account everybody who was in the jail from the beginning of October through the end of October. So there could have been, there may have been people who were released on October 2nd that show up on this count, as well as somebody who came to jail on October 30th and shows up on this count. So that sort of makes it, it, it inflates it when you compare it. This is a total for the month, whereas the twelve-hundred count is an average daily count.
Mm-hmm.
So that's one of the things I want to tweak on this report is to make, see if we can get an average daily count for individuals with mental illness, so that you can have more of an apples-to-apples comparison when you're looking at the numbers.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. It does note total mental health diagnoses of eleven-hundred-and-thirty-four. Does that mean eleven-hundred-and-thirty-four people were examined?
No. That, so, that means that there were, of the people who were examined, there were eleven-hundred-and-thirty-four diagnoses, and some individuals have more than one. So that nine-twenty-one number?
Yeah.
Was the number of individuals who had at least one diagnoses. There were additional diagnoses that were applied to individuals who had more than one disorder.
So, the chart that shows mental health diagnoses and psychiatric medication on the, on the page just before the one that we were just talking about, page forty-seven, it shows diagnoses of mental health, and I don't know, again, if this is an average or, or monthly total, of over eight-hundred, but not quite a thousand. And then prescribed psychiatric medications of over six-hundred. And I'm just wondering how that comports with the nine-oh-one figure here. I'm just trying to get it clear in my own mind, what's, apples-to-apples, as you indicated.
Yep.
And maybe we just need a, a different kind of comparison. Can you tell me what the difference is? If not, I mean, that's fine. I, I.
I, I would rather dig into it and.
Sure.
Dig into it with the folks who provided me with this data rather than give misinformation.
Absolutely. No problem. This chart on page forty-eight, which does show the breakout of the diagnoses, indicates that the more severe, I guess that's the top of the pyramid, is that correct?
Correct.
Portion of diagnoses for psychosis, schizophrenia, schizoaffective psychosis, NOS, is about twelve-and-a-half percent of the whole population.
Mm-hmm.
And then bipolar, the next most severe, is about thirteen-point-one percent of the population. So we have a significant portion of the population who are presenting with significant mental health issues. And I guess my question is, do we have capacity to send them to get some treatment other than just keeping them in corrections and keeping them medicated? Is there any capacity currently available to you for these sick people to go and receive psychiatric treatment?
It's very limited. Our choice, I mean, basically, if there's a Board of Mental Health or, or a competency issue, you know, they're, they're put on the waitlist to go to the Lincoln Regional Center. Aside from that, our, our resources in the community, you know, are not as robust as we would like them to be.
Sure. And I think you mentioned that there were a handful of Board of Mental Health referrals. Is that correct?
Correct.
But other than those handful, these people are not receiving any direct, what you would normally see as long-term or even short-term mental health treatment while they're in our custody?
They are being treated for basically here-and-now issues. They're, they're being, giving their medication.
Right.
They are receiving visits from various mental health professionals, and we do have individuals on reentry services and the medical discharge planner who work towards trying to find appropriate care and placement for individuals when they're released. Sometimes those efforts are successful, and sometimes those efforts are not as successful as we would like.
Right. And just noting this because, you know, we have discussed this before, and you've certainly heard about it, about the lack of long-term mental health care beds in Douglas County. There are none. And the lack of resources, as you've indicated, for taking these sick people out of the criminal justice system and putting them in the psychiatric health system where they belong. Instead, at least twenty-five percent of our population down there being incarcerated with serious mental health issues probably would be better off being treated for those rather than incarcerated and prosecuted for whatever. I, I know that's beyond your control, and you take whoever you're given, but it would, I think, be better and cheaper probably if we had some facility to take these people to rather than the correction center for treatment. I also, and we've talked to your predecessor about this, I also would be very interested in the recidivism rates amongst these people who present with serious psychiatric disorders, because the impression that I have is that it's high.
That would be correct.
They come back. And you say that's correct?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
Yeah. And so, you know, they not only cost us now, but they cost us over and over and over again. So actually, giving them the mental health treatment that they need would probably be a cheaper solution than housing them in the correction center over and over and over again. So this isn't something I know that you can cure, but I just wanted to make sure that we're noting it. Every time it comes up, it's, it's kind of like a red flag.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda. Quick question on perhaps a little bit lighter note. You, when you mentioned a corrections officer that was involved in some heroics, I'd pique my curiosity. Would you mind at least sending us a little synopsis of, of what happened there?
I can do that. And I intentionally was vague in my description to protect the privacy of the individuals that were involved, but I can, I can provide a little more detail.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, let me ask a question before you go. So, go to page two on the report, in the summary, is, so on the pretrial services, are the, so the prior to prosecution is what we've been doing. Are the three-seventeen part of the new pilot?
No, those are not.
Okay.
And I have some work group meetings with the pretrial group that are scheduled to begin next month, again, to circle back to that.
Okay.
And.
Well, that's.
That'll be a continued, yes, that's a separate.
Yep. So let me ask you then, page one. Just curious, so the, the twenty-four-seven sobriety point, the thirty-nine that are there, it's, so just to read it, there's zero no-shows, zero tampering violations, only two alcohol violations, and a ninety-nine-point-eight percent compliance rate?
For that particular mode of.
Now, my, my question is, is this the judge's call or is it your call? And do, do we need to be taking some more risk? Because every time I see a compliance rate that high, that means we got some margin to risk a few more people being put on this and not.
Sure.
Sitting up here.
So it is the, the judges place individuals on twenty-four-seven.
Good.
It is a condition of bond over ninety percent of the time. We've had some discussions as to whether twenty-four-seven, as we look at the grand scheme of, of trying to reform and enhance pretrial, i- in some respects, it almost makes sense for twenty-four-seven to become assumed under the umbrella of pretrial.
Okay.
Rather than being its own standalone program. That's something we will work out because then that would enable us, under our proposed model, or under our pilot, to be able to be a little more selective and assertive in terms of placing people on, on specific conditions of supervision.
Okay.
To include twenty-four-seven and others.
So is there a way to, is there a way for the pretrial staff to do something like a, a sub-tier listing of people that are, could be on pretrial with a little more risk? Because I just want to see what we're dealing with in regards to, if we walk out a little bit more, is there some people that can be out? I mean, to give some thought to that, because I'm, I'm just trying, I want to know who's on, but who may be in a range of being eligible. So I mean, if, I guess the best case to say it is if, like in juvenile, there's a number from one to twelve. If you're one to five, you're, you're released, but if you're in six to nine, you're released with monitoring. And I'm, I guess I'm trying to find where is that six-to-nine range in adult?
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Think, think you're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes.
We're now called to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims that are A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 30th, 2018. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, November 27th, 2018. What's the will of the board?
I shall move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes.
There are twenty-six items on the consent agenda. Please note that we need to lay over, or can we just remove this? Do we have to act and lay it over? Can we just remove it and put it on the agenda?
Either way, Commissioner.
Okay. Can you, we, we're going to remove items E and F as an ax for it to be laid over to the December fourth agenda? And with that, is there a motion to? And with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Kraft. Discussion, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'm a series of, this kind of informational questions here. On item C, resolution approved, stop loss coverage with blue cross, blue shield with the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible for the twenty nineteen plan. I was just wondering what exactly that entails.
I'd try to answer.
Oh, sure.
And then I'll get corrected by Diane, who knows much more than I do. But what we're doing is raising it from four fifty to five fifty. And there's a savings of approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars raised in that deductible. That would be for a major illness where we're self-insured. Diane, go ahead and correct me now.
What you stated is correct. The deductible currently is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And Aon recommended a couple of options. And by raising that deductible to five hundred and fifty thousand, we save in premium costs per year.
Very good. On item I, temporary transfer of budget funds to fees and contracts organization from the Environmental Service Department, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars not budgeted. Mr. Lorenz, I think, is the one on here. What is that exactly involved?
That's, we're transferring money to pay the IRS for the payroll taxes that we've been held responsible for. And so rather than increase the whole budget and have a public hearing at this time, this is just a short-term funding measure that in February, when we do the supplement, we will repay environmental services and add the five hundred and fifty thousand to the overall budget.
Okay, this is for an IRS payroll tax bill? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
Was this not normally budgeted? I mean, I guess I don't understand why it would not be just kind of like the rest of the payroll tax.
This was, if you remember, in executive session when regarding the uniform allowance that was deemed taxable by the IRS and such as being deemed taxable. And it was related, it's considered a payroll tax and liability becomes out of the county.
Right, so this satisfies the IRS's finding, I guess, that that uniform allowance was actually.
Yes, we reached settlement with the IRS and they want their money, so this is the funding mechanism.
Okay. And as long as we're in that area, the next item J, the appointment of Ryan Lindberg and Timothy O'Malley to the Douglas County Retirement Plan Committee, is that a reappointment? Are these new members?
No, these are new members.
Okay. And how are they selected?
They, we put a notice out to all employees that there were openings on the retirement committee. We received eleven applications. A subcommittee was formed to review it and we picked five people as finalists to come and interview with the committee. Those five people came to the retirement committee. We gave a short presentation on their interest. And then based on that, the retirement committee is making this recommendation of the Board of Commissioners that these two people be approved by them for inclusion in future retirement committee meetings.
Okay. Then the following item K, approved payment of additional tax assessment for twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen to the IRS and Nebraska Department of Revenue, five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars plus no more than seventy-five thousand dollars not budgeted. What is that?
Yeah, that, there's really two parts. This was, you know, the part I talked about on I that you asked about was the funding mechanism. And K here is the approval of the actual payment to the IRS. It's the same.
Same dollars.
Same, yeah, same issue.
Thank you. Then item L, resolution accepting a twenty eighteen Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Non-Participation State Grant Award. And I don't know who can address this.
That's the grant that allocates the DMC coordinator that the county has. Am I right?
I'm sorry, say again.
That's the grant for the DMC coordinator that we got funded for by the federal government last year. It's just a re-up of the grant.
Okay. And who is the DMC coordinator?
Ah, Jamal Biden.
And that's a new position or relatively new position, is that right?
Relatively new. It was started last year, we applied for the grant in seventeen.
Correct.
And we got the grant because the state did not stay into the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Grant. Once they got out, Douglas County became eligible, Douglas County applied in twenty seventeen, and when we applied, we got the grant, which allowed us to hire Ah Jamal Biden. It's a grant that we have to re-up every year. This is the second year of the re-up.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Carrie Davis, Douglas County Grant Coordinator.
We have, we're in the second year of this grant application process, is that correct?
We are. It is a, each award is a three-year project period. So the two thousand seventeen grant is a three-year project period. The two thousand eighteen award is also a three-year project period.
Okay. And what's the amount of the grant?
The first one was four hundred thousand dollars. This one is also four hundred thousand dollars. We only asked for roughly three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but they awarded us the full four hundred thousand dollars, which is the ceiling. So after we send in our award documents, we will be tasked with determining what we're going to spend the additional forty thousand dollars on. I can tell you that it, we've decided it will not be personnel. It will likely be equipment.
Okay. So this four hundred thousand sum is spread over this three-year period, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
And the bulk of that is for personnel?
For this two thousand seventeen grant, you are correct. The bulk of that is for Mr. Binden's salary. For the two thousand eighteen grant, we only have one year of salary budgeted in there because we didn't need it until that last year because of the two thousand seventeen grant.
Does this result in any county general fund liability either during the pendency of this grant or at the end of the grant period?
There's no requirement that we retain any employees.
And can applications like this go on for an indefinite period?
Yes, they can. There's already some discussion about the two thousand nineteen RFA likely, if they release it, it will likely release again in the spring and be due in the summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
On a kind of related topic, M, approve, approval of grant award from the Sherwood Foundation in the amount of seven thousand dollars for the Douglas County Juvenile Justice Stakeholder Team to host National Runaway Safe Line Train the Trainer Training. And I think we have somebody here that can give us just kind of a quick overview of that from OYS. Just so the public would know what we're doing in this area, I think it's important to have something more than just the bare bones that we have on our agenda in the record.
Good morning, Janay Pancook, Operation Use Success Executive Director. And that grant was actually pursued by the Runaway Task Force, which is a subgroup of the prevention policy, not prevention, policy and advocacy work group through OYS. And it's to bring in the national, which is a training group of best practices to address missing and runaway children.
Have we done this before?
No, this is a first bite at the apple.
And the seven thousand covers the entire cost of the project?
Right, yeah. And what's really good about this training, not only that it's a best practice, but it's Train the Trainer, so we'll be able to invite thirty participants from our partnering agencies and entities throughout the community to come in, become trainers of how to work with, address, identify, support missing and runaway youth, which is a significant driver within the juvenile justice population that's being served. At any rate, so then we can continue and grow that training throughout the whole community of anyone who wants to be trained up on how to support this youth. Another piece of this agreement was also that we're asking those that participate that they guarantee or commit to at least one training a year. So if you think about that replication over time, when you have thirty participants, it could grow very quickly of how many people we can get trained up.
So would these grants be available for the subsequent training?
This was just a one-time application, so if other, as we move forward, that would be something that OYS would work with, training as they schedule them and see if there's something we can do, you know, to fiscally support them or help them apply for fiscal support. But it should be minimal cost to any organization that would provide the training.
So there's no actual county commitment of funds for this or for subsequent actions in this area?
Correct, correct.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
I just have a couple of other quick ones. On N, resolution reappointing Judy Lou and Lenny Swagger to the Douglas County Audit Committee. And I think this is yours, Commissioner Rogers. These people have been on the audit committee for some time, is that right?
Yes. One has been on for a year and the other for, because it was filling a position, if I recall correctly. Joe, can you answer?
Both these fellows have been on for probably about three years. And they are auditors with outside firms who donate their time to sit on our audit committee.
And these appointments are for a term of how long?
I think, what is it? We're checking, one second, please.
The only reason I bring this up, you've all heard this before.
Three years.
Three years. So these are each entering their second term on the audit committee, is that correct?
Yes.
And do we have anything like a two-term limit on service on the audit committee?
No, not to my knowledge. We, so far, to be honest with you, Commissioner, it's kind of a challenge to get people to serve on this committee.
Sure. And I think that's true, you know, all of our committees, people are making a commitment to public service without really any compensation. It's a good thing. I just point it out because I have a, you know, interest in seeing that we have some term limits at some point on some of our committees. But, yeah.
Yes. As you noted, these are highly skilled people that serve meetings and they tend to appear at the meetings because we can get other people who just don't show. It's important to have people who tend to occupy and participate in the seat. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
There's a motion and a second with the removal of the two items. Please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item four, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for a citizen to comment on a related, on a item, on a board of commissioners-related item that is not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments?
Good morning, Larry Stor, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I want to talk about best practices again. I may not have time to finish this brief one-page thing, but it is a copy of a letter written to the state senators and I believe entered into testimony by a Mr. Wayne Smith in Lincoln, Nebraska. And it's addressing prison overcrowding, single-parent families. I think what he's getting at in this letter is we ought to apply some solutions before they get into prison. And we're talking about youth in this letter. That the youth become more than a youth when they're in prison, particularly if they stay there for a while. But he's giving statistics that probably refute the statistics, some of them we've been hearing today and referred over all these years, that are gathered particularly in our youth center with, by tax-free organizations that gather data about who's there and why they're there. And a lot of it comes out being disparity. What they don't talk about is why they got there in the first place. What they don't talk about today is, excuse me, if they broke a law and they're detained, how could we say, well, it doesn't matter you broke that law because you're mentally ill based on somebody's diagnosis that doesn't know you? I'm afraid that happens a lot. Something else that happens a lot was a recent news story in Iowa about the Clorinda Facility where youths have been sent there by other jurisdictions. Some of them resulted. Careful what you ask for. Okay, statistics, and then I'll quit. Addressing prison issues in the long run, the statistics below, the broken family. If you want to try to fix problems in our city, let's put the money where it belongs, helping the family. The schools should be helping us do that, should they not? The churches? Eighty-five percent of all youth come from fatherless homes, twenty times the average. Seventy percent of youth in state-operated institutions come from fatherless homes, nine times the average. Seventy-five percent of all adolescent patients in the chemical abuse centers come from fatherless homes, ten times the average. Eighty percent of rapists with anger problems come from fatherless homes, fourteen times the average. Ninety percent of homeless and runaway children are from fatherless homes, thirty-two times the average. There are no men on death row from intact families. He cites his evidence here. A lot of it is from best practices people. I'd like to enter that to the committee's records. Thank you. Maybe I've had harsh words in the past, but I'm just asking you to put the focus where it should be. We don't need to embarrass children by putting them in shackles, but if they have to be in shackles, they have to be. Let's don't excuse them of what they've done because they may be based on something that somebody thinks is a behavioral issue versus a mental health issue. You can't determine that in a short time, in particular, if you don't know that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Luis Jimenez, five eighteen North Fortieth Street. Want to begin with congratulating all the winners from the election, this past election. We've got Mr. Kavanaugh. And we also have Diane Batiatto, who won reelection to the assessor's office. And I hope that she gets, Diane gets a welcoming attitude that many have you, that many of you have gotten when you won reelection. And in the middle of an election season, I mean, I got mental fatigue for a while. I got, my mind didn't function for a few days. And good advice says that you got to find your own space during that time and just remove yourself from what you're doing on a day-to-day basis. Anyway, I don't want to say anything specific, anything particular about the county today. I do want to read, however, a poem to you guys as part of my comments. "Dinosauri Awee" by Charles Bukowski. Born like this, into this, as the chalk faces smile, as Smith's death laughs, as the elevators break, as political landscapes dissolve, as the supermarket bag boy holds a college degree, as the oily fish spit out their oily prey, as the sun is masked. We are born like this, into this, into these carefully mad wars, into the sight of broken factory windows of empty factory windows of emptiness, into bars where people no longer speak to each other, into fistfights that end as shootings and knifings. Born into this, into hospitals which are so expensive that it is cheaper to die, into lawyers who charge so much it is cheaper to plead guilty, into a country where the jails are full and the mad houses closed, into a place where the masses elevate fools into rich heroes. Born into this, walking and living through this, dying because of this, muted because of this, castrated, debauched, disinherited because of this, fooled by this, used by this, pissed on by this, made crazy and sick by this, made violent, made inhuman by this. The heart is blackened, the fingers reach for the throat, the gun, the knife, the bomb. The fingers reach toward an unresponsive god. The fingers reach for the bottle, the pill, the powder. We are born into this sorrowful deadliness. We are born into a government sixty years in debt that soon will be unable to even pay the interest on that debt. And the banks will burn. Money will be useless. There will be open and unpunished murder in the streets. It will be guns and roving mobs. Land will be useless. Food will become a diminishing return. Nuclear power will be taken over by the many. Explosions will continually shake the earth. Radiated robot men will stalk each other. The rich and the chosen will watch from space platforms. Dante's Inferno will be made to look like a Childish playground. The sun will not be seen and it will always be night. Trees will die. All vegetation will die. Radiated men will eat the flesh of radiated men. The sea will be poisoned. The lakes and rivers will vanish. Rain will be the new gold. The rotting bodies of men and animals will stink in the dark wind. The last few survivors will be overtaken by new and hideous diseases. And the space platforms will be destroyed by attrition, the petering out of supplies, the natural effect of general decay. And there will be the most beautiful silence never heard. Born out of that, the sun still hitting there, awaiting the next chapter. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dewan Hayes, 2618 Parker Street. I'm here to talk about trauma-informed care. I'm not a therapist, I'm not a trained clinician, but I do know that all people incur trauma. At every point of our lives, we encounter something that will shake us to our core and change the course of our lives. When we think about the spaces we inhabit, we think about the spaces in which we enter, we talk about being trauma-informed, we're truly considering where someone had come, what had happened to them, not as, what is wrong with them, what happened to you? Where do you want to be? Where do I want to be? Do we truly wish to be happy? When we're asking ourselves these questions about trauma, those in our current correctional facility who are not receiving the care because of the trauma inflicted in their lives upon themselves, upon each other, from another party unknown. We're thinking about our children currently in the DCYC, and the new space that will be trauma-informed. We need to be truly considering, what does that mean? And reflect on our own traumas. I can say for myself, being closer to the outdoors, being closer to what is real, what is natural, trees, grass, fresh air, clean water, true sunlight, has helped me with my own traumas. If you've ever gone hiking, truly hiking, you have time to reflect on things in your life that you never wanted to give time to. These young people, especially in Omaha, don't have space, school, maybe work, no place in between. If we can set a precedent, especially with the youth center, that we truly favor our young people and are truly trauma-informed, then perhaps we can create other, more open spaces that don't hold them captive. Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll move over to item A. I mean, committee discussions, item A is Finance Committee. Commissioner Morgan?
As presented.
Okay. Item B, Administrative Services. Item one is a presentation regarding the Administrative Services Committee Juvenile Justice Center and Youth Center Proposal. So let me state, the board has decided on this, and so as a courtesy, we're going to give, I'm going to give this forty, thirty minutes at the most, at ten forty-five. Discussion will conclude at ten forty-five or earlier on this, so there's time for the presentation and whichever comments go from then again. I want to repeat to the public that the decision's been made on this. This is a, an opportunity in discussion to give courtesy and be fair, but at ten forty-five, we're going to discuss, stop discussion on item. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. The Administrative Services Committee proposal relative to the Douglas County Justice Tower and Youth Center, and you're receiving a copy now, was presented at the regular Administrative Services Committee hearing on November eighth. And all the Commissioners there were in support of this proposal, and I wanted to make sure that you, who were unable to attend, had a copy and that we could just review it quickly for purposes of informing the entire board of the proceedings that the Administrative Services Committee held. You have before you a copy, and we've brought copies for the public in attendance if you wanted to avail yourself of these. I also think that there are copies available electronically on the Douglas County Clerk's site. They are not directly available on the site maintained by staff of the Douglas County Board, although there is an item on there relative to alternative proposals to the one proposed by HDR and the private corporation. So in order to get as wide a distribution as possible of this important alternative, in light of the fact that the courts have essentially taken the question of eminent domain under advisement and essentially preclude any movement on that front until that court decision is final, we think it's an ideal time for the board to entertain the alternatives because were the court to find that there is not a need for Douglas County to proceed with taking through eminent domain of private property, the real estate available to us at that point for the proposals that we're discussing relative to the Douglas County Justice Tower and the Youth Center becomes an issue. And this addresses that issue, so it's timely in that the courts have indicated that that proceeding will not conclude anytime this year. And in the meantime, it would be wise for us to entertain alternatives. This document, and I hope I get this right, I'm not the most adept guy at, I'm trying to flip the page here, but.
Okay. I don't know why this won't go away.
Yeah.
Oops.
Yep.
Oh, I can't get that to go away.
The first page that you see before you after the cover is a quote from the DLR Group Chin Planning Study that came out the beginning of 2018. Says the most critical issue related to new and improved detention capacity, this is the juvenile detention capacity, is a trauma-informed environment that complies with best practice principles. This includes an environment that is normative, non-institutional, with youth having access to natural light and fresh air and movement throughout the day. And that's kind of the driving principle of a lot of what you're going to see going forward. If we are to take that principle as important to the development of the process, you'll see how that plays out in this alternative. This is a comparison spatially of the HDR proposal and this proposal relative to just square footage. And, you know, for purposes of the courthouse expansion downtown, there's not a lot of difference. They both come in at about one hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet because they essentially contain the same elements. That is, the juvenile court and its administration and probation offices, the public defender's office, and the county attorney's office. So the space is about the same. The configuration of the space, and you'll see later on, is a little different relative to the footprint, but they're both containing essentially the same services from the point of view of the courts and the lawyers. The difference becomes apparent when you go to the Youth Center proposals. The detention center downtown proposed by HDR is sixty-one thousand square feet, and our current youth center is ninety thousand square feet. And this becomes important because in addition to the ninety thousand square feet, as you'll see later on, the current youth center has outdoor space. The youth center proposed in the HDR proposal is simply a sixty-one thousand square-foot cell block adjacent to the proposed courthouse. So that's a huge difference, and if you go back to the Chin Report, you'll find, not only in the quote that we just read, but in other findings, that that difference is really key to placement of trauma-informed youth center. Colocation, which I know is another important point, is secondary to that point. It does not rise to the level of what we can do in terms of a trauma-informed environment for these children with outdoor space relative to the cell block architecture of the downtown proposal. So when you look at the bottom line, total for all buildings, the total for the Justice Tower, about the same, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Total for the Youth Center, sixty-one thousand downtown cell block versus ninety thousand midtown campus. The campus is already owned by Douglas County. The cell block downtown proposal involves the taking of private property through eminent domain. So the campus for the downtown cell block is about half an acre, none of that outdoor space. And the campus for the midtown that we already own is almost three acres, and a large portion of that is outdoor, as you will see in a minute. So the total for all buildings on the HDR proposal is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four square feet, and for the Administrative Services proposal, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four square feet, although you have to factor in that that's the building square footage, not the campus square footage. And so that's why the two-point-nine-one acres of available campus at Forty-Second Street is so key. Essentially, what the Administrative Services proposal offers are more beds that allow for more programs, and as you'll see, with less cost. This is the space downtown that we are considering building on. As you note, the county currently owns these two buildings. The eminent domain involves this structure. The parking lot here comes with the purchase of the OHA building that the county owns. This is where we are, and this is the existing courthouse. This is the Administrative Services Committee proposal for the downtown courthouse, again, containing all the elements involved in the HDR proposal, with the exception of the cell block and the parking garage. This is the HDR proposal, and you can see the longer building for the courthouse. If you go back, that building is this building, it's just higher. The green structure is the cell block, and behind that, you can barely see it, but it's there in the drawings, is, I believe, a four-story parking garage. So the proposals are, take the courthouse, same same, and do not do the youth center to the cell block, do not do the parking garage. The courthouse itself will house county employees, most if not all of which already work in this complex. No need for new parking, they're already parking there. And the proposals both contain this skywalk across, connecting to our campus here. We move from there to the Youth Center at Forty-Second Street because if you don't do the cell block downtown, you do a reconfiguration of this, which we already own. If you don't do the eminent domain, or if the court does not allow the eminent domain, you do property we already own on Forty-Second Street that's in need of refurbishment. If you don't do the parking garage, which is not really called for in light of the parking situation in downtown Omaha, you have adequate parking on our campus. And this is the almost-three-acre campus that we referred to before in the presentation. This is the proposal to refurbish that, and as you see, meeting the important finding of outdoor space, we create essentially a soccer field plus space that we already own for children to go outdoors, be close to nature, natural sunlight, trees. This area here, of course, is the, the field club. This area here is Douglas County Health Center and the VA. This area here is the Morton Meadows Neighborhood, and this area here is, again, the field club neighborhood bordering UNMC. So this is a much more residential setting for our children with outdoor recreational capacity on ground that we already own, and allowing for refurbishment of the ninety-thousand square-foot youth center to allow for more programs, more creative programs. We have discussed with best practice jurisdictions in Minnesota, Oregon, and other areas, so that we can take what we already have, which is this existing kind of walk-through intake area, and turn it into something that, as you can see, is more conducive to trauma-free experience for children. And by that, we mean, this looks like a correction center intake situation, this looks like a juvenile, a junior high or a high school situation. This is more normative, this is more institutional. And you'll see throughout in this comparison those differences. We're trying to make it as close to the environment that they come from educationally as possible so that the educational rehabilitation services that we hope to program into this would be more normative to the situation that they're coming from in the educational setting that we receive them from. This is a photo of the existing day rooms, those are the commons areas, and as you can see, they are institutional-looking with hard surfaces, metal surfaces, metal doors, limited sunlight, and in need of refurbishment. We can take those and turn them into proposals that vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, but again, best practices show that you do lighter, more natural... But, again, best practices show that you do lighter, more natural finish surfaces. You do more natural colors. You use wood rather than metal where you can. You do sunlight and more natural, softer lighting throughout. This is the example of how we could use, if we eliminated the kind of balcony situation in the current ones, a high-ceilinged day room surrounded by living areas that look much more like dorm rooms than jail cells with natural lighting that could be affected using the current architecture of the youth center that we already own. This, again, encompasses the two-tiered situation that we do have at the current youth center with the day room that looks much more like an educational facility and surrounding dorm rooms using the balconies. Again, with daylight, natural daylight to the commons area. And as you'll see in a moment, these are the existing sleeping rooms, almost indistinguishable from jail cells, with very limited natural daylight. But outward facing, they do, that wall does face the outdoors. So, using that same format, totally redoing the rooms so that they look more like dorm rooms than cell rooms, we get this situation where natural daylight is in each and every room directly to the outside. They look more like what you would see at a boarding school in terms of a study area and a sleeping area. Again, the surface is softer, more natural coloring, less traumatic. You don't get the feeling that you're in jail, you might be at a school. This is the existing library and computer lab. It's totally enclosed, there are no windows. And it's not very big. I'm sure that you've all seen it by now. But I think the dimensions of it, if they are 50 by 50, would be about the extent of it. But it's, there are no windows, it's totally enclosed. This is what we would propose as an alternative. Library, computer labs, these all would accommodate all of those services. Again, softer, more natural colored finishes using light from the outside and making it look like the libraries, computer labs at the schools that these children will be coming from and hopefully returning to. The clinic examining rooms that you see here are the existing, and again, very cramped areas that we provide what health services are available at the youth center, which are limited. And they are, to say the least, archaic and in need of refurbishment and updating. And so, what we would do, and it's allowed by the fact that we're dealing with a lot more space that we already own at 42nd Street than what we could take and build at the downtown cell block, is something that looks and reminds me more of what I see when I go over to see physicians for our children in terms of an intake area, you've got the room to do this. In terms of refinishing all of the examination space and making them look more like what they would see if they just went to a healthcare provider in the course of their regular day. And adding services like this proposal for dental services, and we're already, as you know, in discussions with dental health providers in the community to do some of that in the neighboring Douglas County Health Center. So, would not be that big of a stretch to provide it there. These children are of the age group where dental services are probably close to as important as regular health services. And they are not provided currently in the Douglas County Youth Center. This is the final kind of wrap-up of the budget comparison. And the numbers there are blocked a little bit by this icon, which I don't know that we can remove, the HP product status. But you can see it on the hard copy. Unfortunately, the information that is blocked in this, that you cannot see, is relative to the bottom line of this entire document, which shows... There we go, put it way up there maybe. Shows the difference in cost. When we talk about these alternatives, we've been talking about better, cheaper, smarter, and that's exactly what this goes to. The proposal that you saw, we feel, is demonstrably better for the children involved. The cheaper part, as you can see, relative to the cost estimates of the HDR proposal and those prepared by the architects, engineers, lawyers, developers, healthcare specialists, and others that have worked without expense to the county on the administrative services proposal, are extreme. Basically, if you go to the bottom line, extreme to the point of $24,444,000 in savings. Because the analysis by professionals on a peer with HDR indicates that the proposal that has been put to us as a $120 million proposal is, in fact, rather than the published total project price, really $140 million, 300,000. And that breakdown, believe me, has been subject to the most rigorous examination and vetting by architectural engineer, developer, legal, and professional experts on a par with everyone who's worked on the initial HDR proposal. And with the savings that are realized by using our own property, not taking private property through eminent domain, doing the project ourself, as you heard from the corrections director today, we're on phase two of a do-it-ourselves project at the correction center, on time and on budget, $45 million voter-approved bond issue. And not using outside independent private corporations to run the project on a no-bid contract basis, we save tens of millions of dollars. So, better for the kids, cheaper for the taxpayers. And in addition, we put the whole thing in a bond issue like we did on the successful $45 million public safety bond issue that's currently being run by the Douglas County Public Properties Department, on time and on budget, on the ballot, and let people vote on it. The reason, among other things, is it's democratic, but it's also cheaper and smarter to finance it that way. Douglas County enjoys a AAA bond rating, the highest bond rating available. And if we put it on the ballot and let people vote on it, that's the bond rating that's applied to the project cost. The HDR proposal uses a double-A bond rating of the building commission, much more expensive, particularly when you're talking in the $140 million price range. And the only reason to use that higher-interest-rate bond rating is to avoid a vote of the people. That's not smart. So, better for the children, cheaper for the taxpayers, smarter for everybody involved. And at the end of the day, we don't take anybody's property. And we get a finished product that's better than what is being proposed by the private corporation, that allows for open public bidding, open meetings. And I think we'll hear a lot more about that based on what I've seen from the Freedom of Information request that the World Herald had put in. And this is the alternative that we will face if the court comes down and says, "We do not have to take private property through eminent domain." It strikes me that there's no need to do that. There's no need for Douglas County to do that, there's no public policy need to do that. And as a matter of fact, it would be worse, more expensive, and not quite as informed to proceed that way. So, with all those considerations, we offer you this. There's nothing that we have to do right now because the courts have sustained the temporary restraining order stopping eminent domain for the time being. And if you've reviewed the information provided by our county attorney, that's not going to change this year. We've got time to take a step back, take a deep breath, look at alternatives that are better, cheaper, and smarter, that frankly have overwhelming support by everybody who's come forward from the public at all of the public meetings, over a half dozen held by the Administrative Services Committee and several in this venue, that say, "Take your time, do this right, not quick, and make sure that at the end of the day, we have better, cheaper, and smarter solutions, not only for the taxpayers of Douglas County, but for the children that will be affected by this." I want to thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate you entertaining this. I think it's an ideal time for us to take this alternative look. I know that some of you have, at the behest of HDR, traveled recently to Minnesota to review their facility in Hennepin County. But as far as that goes, there are two facilities in Hennepin County, and I'm informed that you only visited one of them. There is a downtown facility similar to the cell block proposed here, which holds a handful of children in the course of their adjudication through the juvenile court system. And then there is a facility miles outside of the city, the Hennepin County Homeschool, where the bulk of juveniles in Hennepin County that are held in custody are held. And I understand that Douglas County was not shown that facility when they traveled to Hennepin County. You know, it's a little bit concerning because, you know, you've got a private corporation that wants to do a project a certain way, and you have alternatives to that. And when you go to review alternatives and best practices, it's important to get the whole picture. And we've met with the Hennepin County people who design and work on that facility. And it's a two-part, bi-located system. And the folks from Douglas County who went up there didn't see the second part. It's troubling because what we've been hearing over and over again is colocation, colocation, colocation. Well, whether you know it or not, whether you like it or not, Hennepin County's a bi-location system. And you didn't see the other location at the Hennepin County Homeschool, where the bulk of the juveniles in Hennepin County spend their time if they are in custody. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner, and you got questions because people are chomping at the bit. Let me start first by saying, there's a book called, "Don't Say an Elephant, Don't Say the Word Elephant." That book was there, created because it basically is based off concepts of Frank Luntz, that if you say somebody don't see an elephant, they can't help but see it because you just said it, "Don't See an Elephant." So, the points I want to start off with that is, you keep saying cell block. It's not a cell block. But I guess if it's said enough, it'll be there. And it's not a for-profit corporation, it's a non-profit.
I didn't say it was a for-profit corporation. No, I said it was a private corporation, there's a difference.
Good point.
There's a difference.
Private corporation, there's a difference in a non-profit too. So, let me note something just on the record. So, and I don't know if there's so much question, I feel like it's record clarification. But let me point and let me ask the press, you know, I'll back up any of this, and you should look into it too. You note the fact that outdoor space is second to colocation. That is absolutely false. You noted the point that Minnesota, that some of the stuff you talked about is best practice in Minnesota and Oregon, that is absolutely false. I personally know the commissioners there and how they implement it, and I know that is not right. So, my first question is, what happened between the $50 million facility, $50 million facility you proposed at the beginning and how it got to $115 million? What philosophy change happened that you brought to the public a $50 million facility, and now it's at $100 million?
Right. I think that if you look at the original Chin Report, the number in there was like $86 million. And then the published Chin Report was $106 million. And the revised, redacted Chin Report is $120 million. And different proposals over time from both the private corporation's point of view and from the alternative have undergone continuous updating. Situations change, time changes, and considerations change. So that the $120 million and the consideration of the best, most objective professionals that our community contains on this is, in fact, $140 million. The proposal that you heard before involved entirely different configuration, if you'll remember, utilizing just property that we owned and property that we could obtain for other offices so that not everything went into a single tower, as this one did. And the reconfiguration and refurbishment of the Douglas County Youth Center on 42nd Street has, over time, over the months that we've talked about this and the hearings that we've had from all the various stockholders, evolved as well. I think that, you know, you've heard from HDR in the past, and I find this to be true in the development of the administrative service proposal, it's a process. And the process of development, that proposal has changed, this proposal has changed. And it's not a bad thing, if we keep looking at this, as a matter of fact, we're advocating that we do, that this will change inevitably, as developments do, when you're informed of a better way to do things or a smarter way to do things or things that we don't have to do, like take private property, but rather utilize public space.
So, process, so that sounds like the media's saying the first deal with $50 million was kind of wrong.
Well, it may sound to you like that, but that's not what I said.
You used the word "process" instead of "wrong," but it's hard to have your process evolve to $50 million in overrun. And I'm going to ask you to stay in order.
You know...
I'm going to ask you to stay out of extreme danger.
Commissioner Rogers, I appreciate that you're all in on this HDR proposal and that you've participated for over a year, that I can see from the public records request, in backroom discussions with them, and that as a result of that, your objectivity for any other proposal is really questionable. But just listen to what I'm saying. Like HDR said to you, and of course, anything that they say you take at face value, it's a process when we were requesting that they come forth after months and months and millions of dollars of expense with some numbers, the same. Except the people that put this together, every bit as good as the HDR professionals, didn't get a nickel of taxpayer money, despite the fact that we request funding for the alternative proposal, and this board saw fit not to go that route. But the fact that officers of that private corporation sit before me here today should draw into question the objectivity of people...
I'm sorry, Commissioner, how did that get to $50 million?
...to question what we're putting forward to you from the citizens of Douglas County.
I hear you, so I'm going to just leave it at that for the people and the public to decide. Because the question that was, you got to a place of other board members, but the question was asked, I guess, "How did you get to $50 million?" But that's fair, let's leave it there. Let me say too, just for the record. So, you're discussing HDR, which is the body that was approved by this body to do the work. Your own record is saying, "The people that work with you on this project are not coming forward because they have fear of retribution in the business community." That's what was listed in Omaha World Herald, is that a fair statement by the Omaha World Herald?
No, the Omaha World Herald's here, and you can certainly question them relative to what the Omaha World Herald says.
I'm sure I read in their publication that when you were asked about the people that were doing your architectural work, they did not want to come forward because of fear of retribution. Is that a fair statement?
What I said was, they're on a peer with an every bit as good as the HDR professionals.
I'm not asking about what you said there, I'm asking about what was written in the paper. Because I would like to hear from your architects, because I got some questions later and related to that. Are your architects going to come forward?
I don't have architects. These are people, private citizens of our community... These are people, private citizens of our community.
Other members of the private citizens that worked on it.
Kindness of their heart and their civic mindedness have prepared for us, at no taxpayer expense, an alternative to the proposal that you have been driving at the cost of millions of dollars and the other members of the corporation that sit on this board and our employees of Douglas County who sit on the private board are driving. What I'm saying is, at no cost to anybody in the public, this proposal, which is every bit as good and has been vetted by the World Herald and others in the private sector, is there. Let's take a look at it. Do you have the ability to be objective for a second? Are you all in with the private corporation?
The World Herald's vetted your proposal?
The World Herald is somebody that you should talk to if you want to bring the World Herald, and I think they're represented in this room.
Did you just say the World Herald vetted your proposal? I thought I heard that.
Did you read the article published in the Omaha World Herald relative to this proposal? Did you?
Just, just let it be noted, there's three questions that I've asked.
I think you did.
Fair. Can I ask H D R to come up, because I got a question. I want to ask about their, the square footage question that he posed there. That seems, conversation I had with you, that seemed, that seemed low. Bruce?
Bruce Carpenter, H D R.
Talk to me about, I think, I'm looking at the page where it says 162 square footage. How can that? I'm not really versed in it, but my understanding of conversations. Can you explain to me a secure facility, everything that comes with that, and how that, you're seeing that as inaccurate?
Well, I, I guess I'd like to start, there's, there's a.
You want station name, just so?
Yeah.
You did? I did, I missed it, okay.
There's, there's a lot of questions and discussion. And I, I think, you know, in our, in our profession, we, we try to be respectful of other firms and discuss merits or critique, but in a, in a, in a respectful way. So I, I want to be careful with my comments and, and make comments out of respect for the professionals involved in this project. At that same time, there, there are some things that, I, I think in a large part, the numbers reflect the numbers we have shown and presented, both in areas of the components and in, in the cost, with the exception of a couple. I think the, related to the, to the 167,000 square feet, I think there's a difference in, in the size and shape. And one, one difference could be in the size of the, of the footprint. I think what, what we've been using is 18,000 square feet. I think the, the area that's available for the tower that was shown is about 14,000 square feet per level. And this, this is a little complicated, so I don't want to, I don't want to get into the weeds, but it has to do with the usable or net square feet compared to the gross square feet on each floor plate, because you have the same elements, the same stairs required, same elevators required, same vertical shafts, restrooms on each level. So you end up with a slightly different net-to-gross ratio, and there would probably be a difference in the overall gross square footage. It's, this is a, like I said, a little bit complicated, but I think as a real estate person, P J. would recognize the net-to-gross factors and how they vary with the size of the footprint.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you. I just want to add a couple of quick things on numbers. And that's what I guess, if I do have something I'm good at, that might be part of it. One is, these numbers really are almost, if you pull out the youth center and take the first, the last sheet that you presented with your numbers, it's almost exactly the same for the tower. It's within 2 million dollars. If you look at it, you've got the total numbers there of 120 million and 104. If you pull out the youth, the difference in the youth center of the 12 million dollars, you get very close to the same numbers. Mr. Kavanaugh, Commissioner, and Bruce. The other thing I want to say, and it's been stated, the World Herald's come up several times today, Chris, I'm gonna mention something about the numbers of 162 dollars per square foot. I've seen us add some dental office exam rooms recently. And just to add those rooms right next door, take out a wall and do something like that, we've spent over 200 dollars a foot, not putting in restrooms or any of that, but adding those dental rooms, there is some plumbing that's run to those rooms. Also in the World Herald recently, there's been stories on 90,000 square foot buildings in Omaha, which would be the same size as a youth center, in recent months. And the cost in the World Herald talked about the renovation of a building that's going to go back to its same youths, and that cost was 75 million dollars. So if you called it 100,000 square foot, and let's say we took it down by a third, instead of 700, or 75 million, we'll take it to 50 million, that becomes renovation of 500 dollars a foot. So I really got to tell you, with today, the way that construction is in Omaha, and we're seeing it all the time on 13th, on what we're doing with our renovation of the Bohemian and so on, the 162 dollar number is just not an accurate number. I think you'd be closer, and I don't want to speculate, but I think if you could get it to 300, you'd be doing really a good job. So I'm not an expert like your people, and I respect them.
I appreciate that.
But I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Kavanaugh that you've done some good work on the tower. I have some disagreements, and I know Claire will state it most likely more eloquently than I do, but I did check out the one that you talked about up in Hennepin County. That is not a detention center. And I like to use the word detention center, like they do in Maricopa County, King County, and up in Hennepin and St. Paul. And the fact is, that's a treatment center, totally. And you can correct me, Claire, if we heard differently, but that's what we found out. If you've got a addiction and a drug problem, that's where they're going. We don't do treatment at our youth center, and we don't have a treatment center. That's where the youth that need the treatment are sent after they go through the court system and so on. But I'm, I want to conclude so we don't take up too much time.
I appreciate that, but a couple of points. I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Morgan. And you serve as, I believe, Vice Chair of the private corporation that's overseeing the H D R proposal. But the numbers that, and we can, anybody can disagree on numbers. Numbers that you see in here are, in the case of the new construction, exactly the same numbers pretty much as H D R used. In the case of the refurbishment construction, numbers that are generally accepted in the architectural engineering community for structures of this kind. Relative to the Hennepin County example that you used, you're right that these two structures, most importantly, are not co-located, involve some rehabilitation. And we're asking that with the addition of 30,000 square feet at 42nd Street, that we add programs that would help kids who have problems, maybe with addiction, maybe with psychiatric problems as well, as long as they're in our custody. And the addition of those programs, I think, is a key component of what everybody's been looking for. So it's a little bit of a, I hate to copy somebody's term, paradigm shift from what we're doing currently at the Douglas County Youth Center, from simple detention. The detention component of Hennepin County, which exists downtown with the courthouse, and maybe you saw this, has a population of under 10, under 10. Those kids who are there are not the equivalent of the population that we're talking about in our youth center. We have, as you know, different populations in the youth center, with kids staying up to 50 days, some a lot longer, 80 days. Some, I think the last one we saw there had been there for more than a year. That's not what's in downtown Hennepin County's detention center. Those, I think the last population I saw of that was seven. Kids are there because they're going to court and they're being adjudicated. And what we have is a similar population who goes to court from 42nd Street. The average is about four or five a day, out of the overall population of 80. So, you know, it's, it's hard to get apples and apples out of this thing when we're looking at different facilities. But Hennepin County's, and those people we've discussed with from Hennepin County, has a bi-located campus outside the Hennepin County Homeschool and a downtown adjudication center with a population, like I said, of under 10.
I'm gonna just say one thing, and I don't want to debate it, but I want to mention one thing. Maricopa County has two facilities, and I was there. Maricopa County has a population of 4.2 million. That's roughly seven times, a little more than seven times, our population. And there are two facilities that are totally detention centers. They house under 200, 80 to 100 at each one. Last week, they had 186 when I sat there and talked with them, and it was totally, that's their detention center, period. And they take them to court and do that, all in the same facility. And they are there longer periods than just six days or one day or 30. So that's it.
And that's, that's great to know.
Well, Jim, hold up, hold up, hold up, no, hold up. Hold up, no, I know, but hold up, let, let Bruce finish, and then you'll be able to come back.
I just have to interject that, a couple of things. One, the 162 dollars is, is not for this type of secure facility that's occupied 24 hours a day and the, and the renovation. I, it's, the, what was depicted are actually new facilities, not renovations. But to get to that level of finish. And, and we had looked at this in, in your previous proposal through an independent estimator that we have a lot of faith in, and he, he had offered 240 dollars as kind of a conservatively low number on, on what that would be. And that, that, that makes a difference. So that's one point. The, the numbers that you talked about in Hennepin County are, I, I think you might be confusing the, the length of stay with the number of kids, because the number of kids are not under 10, but the length of stay is. So there's just a lot of misinformation that is hard for the public to discern. And I think the, the World Herald reports what's said. I don't think they, they verify necessarily. You know, their reporting on, on what's put out there is information. If that information is not correct, that's a real challenge for the public trying to understand, you know, scope and cost and, and even number of kids. We, we did spend time in Hennepin and Ramsey, and that is their detention component, the same detention that we're talking about here. And we were pretty clear and, and had some deep conversations with what, what they're doing. But their, their numbers have ranged in the 25, maybe more in Hennepin, which is a larger population, and Ramsey being almost exactly the same population that we have, is 25. When we were up there, they were kind of between 19 and 14. But the length of stay is less, and that's a calculation that varies county to county. So we're really looking at the overall number of kids that are in.
Can you go through this handout? And before you, before you go, I want to make a statement to what the commissioner said, that he tried to use the paradigm shift in respects of what he was saying, but I want to make sure the public understands this stuff is getting mixed up. What you just proposed is not a paradigm shift. A kid getting that service you want to, and I think, I, I forgot what it was in regards to alcoholism services or other services like that.
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation services. If that kid's in there, he shouldn't be getting it in the detention center. And that's the whole point of the project. The kid should be getting it outside the detention center, because if you want to speak to trauma-informed care, a kid who's having those type problems, it exacerbates their problems by getting treatment in there. They should be getting that outside. So that's not a paradigm shift, that's some, that's something that's going to make the kid potentially worse.
I, I think that's a great point, the separation of those services is important. I think we all need to understand what, what we mean by detention and what our goal is in detention. The, the kids have not been sentenced, they're, they're waiting, they're waiting on the process. They're waiting on a court date, they're waiting on maybe psychiatric assessment, they're waiting on, in some cases, placement, but that shouldn't be a reason to, to be in detention. So the, the transformative or paradigm shift that we're looking at is how do we keep those kids from waiting? How do we significantly reduce that time? And that's where the co-location becomes effective. All of the, the transfer of the kids on a daily basis, and the, the trauma that's related to that, the, the inefficient communication or the more efficient communication if they're co-located is, is what's driving these numbers down in, in Hennepin and Ramsey, along with other things. So this is, the, the first priority is, is how do we make the operation more efficient so the kids aren't in, in detention? So that we're significantly reducing the number of kids. I agree with all of the comments about nature being a healing and restorative component, and we do have an outdoor area with nature. I think the, one of the concerns with a large open area that's adjacent to public streets is unfortunately, a lot of these events are timed every day, and kids that have been in detention know what the timing is. You end up with kids trying to know when the kid, the other kids will be outdoors and, and whether it's communication or contraband and those kinds of things. That's a reason for these smaller outdoor areas. So those, those are just some of the things that I wanted to clarify and what we're trying to accomplish with the co-location. We still feel that's the first priority, still providing what's comparable to the Healing Garden at the Cancer Center, being an outdoor space that they have access to, to nature and fresh air and sunlight. We, we've done a lot of the research, I think, that, that resulted in, in the board vote at, at the last time about the direction and why we're moving. I think the visit reinforced that. And it, it's not an H D R proposal, it's, it's a proposal that is being advised by a larger group. And we, we try to advise our clients on what the best proposal is from a professional aspect. So if we, if, should we go back to this chart?
Yes.
Okay. There's only, I've highlighted cells that we have.
I have a point of order here, Mr. Chairman. This committee report that I put on the agenda does not include what we're now hearing, which is essentially a commercial for H D R's proposal, again. I, I would suggest that if they wanted to put that on the agenda.
I hear your point of order, but it's.
Certainly be willing, in my opinion, to have that opportunity.
They presented.
But to make it part of my committee report is not, I'm, I'm not finished.
Well, no, let me, let me listen to what I'm, listen to what I'm saying.
That was put on the agenda.
Listen to what I'm saying.
If he wants to do public comment, maybe that's more appropriate.
No, that's not public comment.
I understand that the officers of the corporation who sit here before us want to hear from the corporation.
Are you going to respect what, what I'm telling you?
This is not part of the committee report.
And, and, and he is comparing the budget you laid out with what that, so that's all in line. Please continue, Bruce.
But I don't think that it's part of what I put on the agenda. This is over and above the pass of the time that you delineated.
No, I gave you 30 minutes, so you had your 30.
This is the committee report, this is it.
Okay.
Now you have public comment from somebody who's not part of the committee report, maybe denied.
Your point, no, they, they will have their time, your point's heard.
This is not part of the proposal.
Your point's heard, please continue.
This is for private corporations.
Oh, come on. Oh, come on, let us have some discussion.
Claire, just a second. Bruce, please continue.
Well, then I went rebuttal time, because this is obviously a commercial.
Will you, now, I'm, this is the last time. You're out there.
So.
Please respect what I'm saying to some degree, Bruce.
And some of this was done, as I said, in response to the earlier proposal, but the two hundred and forty dollars, there's four cells that we looked at here. The two hundred and forty dollars, we think, is still conservatively low, but a more appropriate number to use for renovation that's being put forth. And then whether the project manager is used is, could be on either side of the line, so it's really just looking at comparable services. There was an item at the bottom that was added of escalation. Escalation is included in our numbers above, and you had an additional year. I'm not sure the logic, but we kept that. And so, those were the changes. The parking is, as you said, still under discussion and may or may not be needed downtown with the number of parking spaces we have. That's left to the building commission. So, it makes really kind of an apples-to-apples comparison, and I think it's important, if you put a number out there, that this is twenty-four million dollars less, that we use a bit more of an honest comparison and cost, so.
Thank you.
No, wait. This is not a court hearing. You had like thirty minutes to that, so follow my guidance in respects of this. This is not a tit-for-tat court hearing. You presented your proposal. I allowed them to discuss on the numbers. Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is very frustrating process and discussion. We're confusing Commissioner Kavanaugh's personal recommendations and calling an administrative services committee recommendation. Our committees are a committee of the whole. The whole board has voted a couple of times on this topic. We didn't vote this way. This is not the administrative services committee recommendation. It is Jim Kavanaugh's recommendation. I would remind the board that.
Actually, if you've been with the administrative services committee.
It's my turn. It's my turn. It's my turn. Let me know when you're done talking, and I can have the floor back. Okay. Are you done talking, Jim?
I'm taking documents.
Sit down, because you're giving fodder. You're giving fodder for this. Just sit down, and I can't pull this back now. Jim, you're going to respect the rule of it, or then, I was considerate in giving you time to put this on. Now, this is my last time asking. And when you, no, 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 no. When I recognize you.
Are the private corporation.
And present critiques, and then you don't allow us to address.
Jim, you're done. You're done. Please, Claire, continue. No. I, man, I'm going to try to ask you for the last time, because if I have to do this, then I'll ask that they, because you're not being recognized when you're speaking. I'm asked, no, no, no. You're in the board meeting. Please adhere to our say.
You want to bring these guys in here, that's fine, but they're not going to be unanswered when they make accusations about the numbers on here like.
It's supposed to be my turn, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Two and a half billion on their side, they just stick it in as two and a half billion dollars on the administrative side. That's a big difference. And if you have.
Are you going to ever let me speak, Jim? Jim! Jim, can I ever speak?
Jim, did anyone interrupt you when you talked thirty minutes from this board? No one did.
All I'm asking for is for you to address, but I didn't object to when they put it on my committee report.
Hold up. Jim, hold up. We're going to go into recess for five minutes. We're going to recess. Recession. You ready? Okay, we're going to come out of recess. Bruce, I see you all. We're going to come out of recess. If you want to continue, and then I'm going to go try to let all the, I mean, Claire, if you want to continue, then I'm going to let the commissioners answer, and I'm going to let the public there make one comment. We got some time constraints here in here today, so I'm going to try to move this as quickly as possible. Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I will try to be brief on this, as brief as I can. Big, important topic. Having gone on my own dime to Minneapolis and St. Paul and visited what they have, I have become quite a fan of co-location, the importance of having the court next to the detention center. I think ten years ago, if you'd asked some of us where we see juvenile justice going in Douglas County, we'd have said we would like to build a new juvenile courthouse out at Forty Second and Woolworth. Didn't really work. That was our first choice, but for a long time, we've known the importance of having these two facilities together. And what I saw up in Hennepin and Ramsey County, where the detained youths are sitting in their class until ten minutes before their court appointment, when they are escorted up by a detention center employee who meets them at the door, a deputy sheriff walks them into the court, no shackles, no handcuffs, they're in class until ten minutes before their appointment. That's the kind of long-range vision I think we need to have. And to do long-range, I mean, this, I'm hoping this is a hundred-year plan. Our current hundred-year-old courthouse, I'm hoping our courthouse addition meets our needs for the next hundred years. This has got to be a long-term plan, and to have your long-term vision be that the detention center is not at the same place as the juvenile courthouse, means that you find, long-term, that it's acceptable, that at the beginning of the day, the bailiff for the juvenile court puts out a list, says, "These are the kids that I want brought over today," and they're all taken out of their environment and shackled and handcuffed and put in a paddy wagon and brought over here and kept in a cell for the day and told to stay out of trouble. Captain Sellers up in Minneapolis, they said these kids are doing nothing. He said, "They're not doing nothing. They're flushing towels down the toilets and doing whatever they can, whatever kind of, what else do they have to do? They're sitting there all day, waiting for a possible court hearing." At the end of the day, maybe they didn't get that hearing. Maybe they get taken back to the juvenile detention center. Maybe it's the next day. We'll try again. To have that as your long-range goal, I don't understand. I can't accept that as what we want to aspire to. What we want to aspire to is that these are, recognizing these are our kids, they're not their kids, they're our kids, and that we want them treated with as much respect and dignity. These are pre-adjudication. I also resent the muddying of the waters of pre-adjudication and post-adjudication, and to have this coming from an attorney of all people really floors me. Hennepin and Ramsey County each do have a treatment center that's post-adjudication. That's where the kids can be sentenced to, if that's the most appropriate treatment. But they aren't held there while they're awaiting trial. That's the detention center. That's the apples-to-apples that we should be focusing on. One other quick point on the parking, I would suggest that you look at the list of how many hundreds of employees are currently on the waiting list, waiting for a parking spot. Now, we're talking about bringing the detention center down here with more employees, but we're told, nah, we've got enough parking already. We don't need more. The parking's going to pay for itself. It's financially break even, so to count that as some of the savings, that we just won't let any of those people park or give them parking, that isn't how you save money. Thank you.
Two quick observations.
No, 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 no.
Oh, we're not going to have any observations on any?
You've had your time, Mr. Crowe.
He raises a couple of points that I'd like to give you information on.
You'll get your time.
Jim, you're talking over us. Be polite, be polite for a change. Okay. Be polite. Okay. Facilities, parking. I've talked, I've had to park two blocks away from the youth center when I've gone to visit it, okay? I've had to park on the other side of Forty Second Street. There is not adequate parking at the current youth center for parents, for therapists, for those who are, for their attorneys, in many cases. Building a building and adding two extra stories should increase the cost of the building considerably, because every story up creates more additional substructure or foundational We're still subjecting the youth to the trauma of three hours in a silent room as, I wish I could speak as eloquently as Commissioner Duda does, okay? But we're still subjecting to them, to the additional trauma of being in shackles, transported, and then many times waiting in a room before they see the judge. Our average length of stay is only three days, if I recall. Not the average length of stay, the, many of our youth are only there for three days, okay? Many of them are there in and out the same day. Many of the items you include in your report and are so proud of are also included in the HDR proposal, where things will look more like a family center, less like an institution. I also noticed the psycholinguistics you use. When you're talking about ours, you call it a cell block. When you're talking about yours, you're much more gentle, and you don't call it a jail. You call ours a prison, a jail, a cell block, and somebody in your friends, your supporters called it a gulag. Well, the same could be said for what you're proposing. I must say, the sheriff sent us an email a while back that implicated by having the co-location, he would save a considerable amount of money in his court costs. And the other is, as Commissioner Duda said, the extra time they can be spending in the classroom instead of being in a bookless room, just thinking of, how do I twiddle my thumbs anymore or any differently? Yeah. You're very good at talking over and not letting other people talk, Jim, and I think that you need to learn to be polite to us, all of us. Thank you.
So, you'll get the piece to say what you want to say at the end, and that'll be brief, because you gave thirty minutes. I'm going to let a brief public comment happen now, because as I stated, we've been here out of courtesy to, and what I mean by being here, this is voted on, and we've tried out of courtesy to let you have your hearing, so I'm going to ask the public to be brief and go for it. Anybody from the public want to comment on the presentation?
All right. Well.
You haven't been recognized.
I thought you said I.
Now, I'm going to give you a point at the end after them, so I'll ask you to hear to that. You know, my tolerance is kind of gone now, respect, because, you know, you want to hijack the hearing. Please state your name.
Luis Jimenez, five eighteen, north.
I'm going to give you a look at, listener, hold up, we said, because we've been there on this discussion, the light's going to change, so note it. It's going to go to three minutes.
Three minutes.
That's discussion. Well, don't start my time yet, then. Okay, can I get this turned on?
Luis, you want to let somebody else come until you get ready?
Well, I'm going to be doing the same thing.
Well, you can get ready and set it up there until somebody else comes. Does anybody else want to make comment?
I'm ready. Five eighteen, North Fortieth Street, Luis Jimenez. Appreciate the Commissioner Kavanaugh's report. If you don't want to consider this a committee thing, it is the chairman's, committee chairman's report. At least give him that. So, I'm concerned about the report that came out, not even a year ago, in January, the court space study. I feel that the judges, we're doing this because of the judges, and this report has very inadequate space for judges. I think law and order gives judges more space than this, so we should take a look at that. It's the judges' chamber, which I'm speaking about. Also, the cons, the cons to the downtown plan is extensive. They're telling us not to do it there, and you guys are trying to find reasons as to why you want to do it there. And the cons for the campus style at the current location, they're really not cons. Potential lack of bus services, we can take care of that. So, to your point about cell blocks, I wish I had more time, because I could bring something out. HDR has a plan for the outdoors facility area, okay? It's in a block. It's covered, the sky is covered by panels. That's a cell block, sir. It really is. The plan that Commissioner wants to have for the students, I mean, for the juvenile offenders, has an outdoor, it's so outdoors that they can run out, out of there. That's why there's a fence, a wall, to keep them in there. Anyway, I still have problems with this process of you guys assigning, developing. Anyway, I still have problems with the, with this process of you guys assigning, developing authority to the corporation, because this project is the first and only project that that corporation has worked on. And you think that's a public good? I question that. That is not a public good. And there was another person that wanted to speak, but she is not here, and she wanted to ask, "Why does the board not want to allow a public vote, which would include a triple, AAA bond rating? Why is the board so set on talking, taking private property of a taxpayer? And thirdly, why are no alternative proposals allowed to be discussed?" Finally, we are being, we're in the process of discussing an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bob Perrin, 1101 South 36th Street. Actually, the elephant in the room is, that's where we're at. The new president of the American Institute of Architects, Carl Elefante, wrote, wrote an article in the most recent journal, talking about existing buildings are the elephant in the room. As architects, we've been building new buildings for a long time, for tens and tens of years. It turns out that the ideas about existing buildings are changing, they're evolving, and we're beginning to realize that they are a resource. They're like water, they're like air, they're like energy. Existing buildings need to be purposefully managed and utilized and respected like all the other resources we have on the earth. And they're an enormous resource for growth. This is relatively new in the architectural profession, because up till now, we rip them down and build new. We're looking at the world differently now. Thank God we're a part of it. Even our own upbringing was disposable things. We threw things away. Paper plates, plastic, plastic, silverware, all kinds of things we just disposed of. We're not doing that anymore. We've realized that the earth has a finite number of resources, and so keeping existing buildings avoids the release of massive greenhouse gases, emissions, and it, and it diminishes the need to demolish buildings and use the resources just to demolish and to build another one. Instead, we're starting to use those resources of buildings as a learning tool for what life was like before we addicted, we're addicted to fossil fuels. They're cultural resources. They teach us about our heritage. They teach us about where we came from, and to give us a chance to pass down the values of our ancestors, our grandparents and great-grandparents and parents, onto our children and to their children. Without buildings, we don't have that capability. We have a library that's less than 50 years old we want to throw away, because it's too old. We're talking on this project about a building that's almost 100 years old. It's in great shape. And in fact, that building, somebody described it as a brick building, it's not a brick building. It's a concrete building. It's poured concrete. It has a brick facade on the outside. The structure is concrete. If you were to move it, you'd have to pick it up with a big crane and move the whole thing at one time, because it doesn't come apart. So I'd, so I'd like to embrace this concept of respecting our forefathers and promote a vibrant, healthy city core. The greenest building is the best one we have, and let's stop tearing things down. So here's a copy of that article. I'll give to you that editorial, so you can read the details. The philosophy is that we need to change as architects from demolishing to preservation and restoration and use of our resources, not destroying them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Do I need to repeat my name and address again? Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska. Since we're on the topic of juvenile justice, you know, we're all being a little juvenile here today. And there's probably some breast practices people in the audience that are looking at their checklist of mental health symptoms. And if you use those type of things, you probably would check off just about everybody that spoke today, including myself. So I guess there's a state law now that says, "We knock on doors and we watch from the schools. We find somebody that exhibits these symptoms, and we might detain them. We might call in the Omaha police with a counselor that's with them." And spot-judge them right there and say, "Regardless of what the parents wishes are, we're going to detain them for a while." Excuse me, there is a difference between being arrested and being detained. Now, if they're in the juvenile justice system, is it because they've been detained without any committal of a crime? I guess that's against the Constitution, isn't it? For somebody else to assume that that person has mental health illness and have them committed on that basis, that he's probably a danger to society, or if we enter seat now, we can stop him from entering the prison system. Maybe that's also unconstitutional. But to put, try to put a little humor in this, and because I'm doing this, somebody might say I'm mentally ill. But do any of you remember the Road Runner comedies? The Road Runner keeps inventing new schemes, buying new things to help trap the Road Runner.
That's Wile E. Coyote.
Wile E. Coyote, I'm sorry. Wile E. Coyote, yeah, Wile E. Coyote. But he, he just never seems to work. And then the last scene is usually he's falling down that big crevice with the bloodshot eyes, just before the cloud of dust rises. But he lives to another day, doesn't he? And finally, I guess I feel real slighted that, that Mr. Kavanaugh was not escorted out of the room for hi, his comments and, and not letting you interrupt him and asking you not to interrupt him. I guess rank has its privilege, doesn't it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
DeJuan Hayes, 2618 Parker Street. I found it concerning that prior to Kavanaugh speaking, it was stated, "We have already decided." This has already been decided. By whom? The Board of Commissioners? Interesting. We have an entire population of citizens, people who live here, whose children will be impacted by this, whose futures will live beyond this Board of Commissioners today. And a lot of people didn't even know this was happening until eminent domain was brought up in May. It's very interesting how decisions about our futures, our children's futures, this places that we inhabit today, are being made by people without truly listening to the entire population of the people who live here, especially when there's public comments, multiple public comments in meetings that I've been to, I haven't seen any of you at. So it leaves me to question, what is the commissioner, or is the Board of Commissioners truly making a decision with and for the county, or just for the county? Without true consideration of what we might want? There's, today was the first real discussion of back and forth between, I'd heard of two plans. There's all kinds of plans and ways that we can come to a consensus of, "Maybe the square footage is 240. Let's look at that. Let's truly have a discussion besides, we've decided, they've presented a plan, and this is the one we're going with, and this is how it's going to be done." When obviously, there's, there is, there are more ways to do it. There's creativity, something that I'd say Omaha and Douglas County are severely lacking. We have an opportunity to truly rehabilitate, to inform our children, to ensure that they aren't in these spaces any longer. We have the opportunity to truly overhaul how we approach juvenile justice in Douglas County and Omaha, Nebraska. Things can be different, truly different. And I would appreciate if there was a, a real opportunity for the community that we're talking about all the time, and the kids, and the young people that are involved in this, to be heard. I've yet to see a single young person who is currently in DCYC be able to speak in front of all of us, to hear, have their stories be shared. I guess I'll have to do some research myself.
Let me make another point to you, just to correct it. There's, there's been three hearings on this, three, like five, six-hour hearings. So it's been voted on officially. So it's not an issue of the board saying, "This is how it's going to be done." No. There's been three opportunities that this has had. There's been one alternative plan that was presented. As I said at the beginning, this was my attempt for, to be fair and give courtesy to a commissioner. So this has been voted on. Public has had their time to chime in. So it, it hasn't been an issue of the board saying, "This is how it's going to be done." The board's heard comment, may not agree with the, we don't agree with everything some people saying, but they've had their turn. So that's what we'll make that for the record. Anybody else?
I've attended a lot of meetings. I went to one last week for the public at 55th and Ames. I've traveled all over town, it seems like. And up there, I did not get the impression that people were well-informed, and I, I think we haven't had a chance to give input, simply because there's so much public outcry now, saying things that they didn't know about. So I think it behooves everyone to slow the process and let the public feel like they know what's happening. Here's, here's a time that they've stepped forward to say that they are interested, and I don't know how often that happens, but they've stepped forward now. And I think you would make many points to keep informing people, to sell them what you are trying to sell them, and make them feel informed. But I heard, it was a time I didn't speak, and I'm from the south, and for that to happen is pretty unusual. But I just listened that night, and I heard a lot of people from that community talk about the programs that they have tried to implement, and they can't get any support, either with their own children that need that assistance, or they can't get the funding, and they have initials beside their names, too. So thank you very much for letting me say.
Anyone else? Jim, you got three minutes to say your last piece of your women's report.
Just quickly, you know, there are some portions of the HDR document that you received today, presumably today, that are just assumptions made by them, and I don't want them to go unaddressed. So they add in, just kind of willy-nilly, $8 million to the Administrative Services Committee proposal for construction. And then they add in $2.5 million for a project manager that we specifically say we don't need, we can manage it ourselves, bumping the cost of the Administrative Services Committee on their document up $10.5 million. They leave off the million-dollar difference between their demolition costs and what we have for demolition costs, because they would demolish the building that they want us to take by eminent domain. They leave off $7 million for a parking garage, because they just don't put it on there. And they leave off $7 million roughly for acquisition of not only the property from eminent domain, but 18th Street. And then they step up these costs on the Administrative Services Committee, so that it appears that it's about equal to theirs, when in fact, it's $24.5 million less. Just by adding these figures in, willy-nilly, you know, the examination of them is something that would be another committee hearing, and I'd be happy to invite them to the next Administrative Services Committee hearing to discuss it. There have been over a half dozen of these public hearings now in the Administrative Services Committee from all of the stakeholders in this. As to Commissioner Duda's observation, the 42nd Street proposal allows us to have a courtroom at 42nd Street, like we have at the Douglas County Correction Center. That's part of the alternative proposal, so that the kids would not have to come down here by and large at all. The four or five kids that come down per day could be largely serviced by a courtroom on 42nd Street, like the inmates of the correction center are serviced in the correction center courtroom that we built there some years ago. So we have the opportunity to have them adjudicated there and to go outside there, both of which would be upsides based on the Chin Report that are not available downtown. Finally, the Douglas County Building Commission space study, which should have been considered before this whole project went down the line, is yet to occur. And yet, the records that we've received due to the Freedom of Information Act that the World Herald filed, shows that these discussions have been going on amongst commissioners and HDR since early 2017, behind closed doors. Let's do it in the open. Let's take a deep breath. Courts have stopped it. Let's do this right, not quick. Thank you.
Let me say this final comment, that working from the bottom, your point made about putting a courthouse in there, that would be one courtroom. The whole, one of the whole purposes we're here is because we have five judges. We're going to get six, seven, and eight. Having one courtroom over there would solve nothing.
We've got six today.
We got six today. Solving, having one courtroom in a facility would solve nothing. That's what we're trying to get out to by that.
Well, solve something.
Nah, I'm, you, Jim, I gave you a time. I, Jim, I gave you a time. This is closing comments. Nah, nah, it's not. So you're done. The point made about the parking garage, you mentioned the space study, the parking garage is a separate deal. The $7 million is a building commission project. Commissioner Duda and those guys can talk to that. The demolition that you stated in there, just note for the record, and I am not rebutting, I'm giving correction, that is in the cost of doing business. That's there. And let's just note, the point made about project management and that we're going to do it ourselves, you greatly note the bond issue that we're doing at Corrections. We don't manage that. HDR manages that. There's not a project that we do here that they manage in there. So your removal of costs to do that is not consistent with any way we manage projects around here. So I just note that for fact of the record for that, I'll be willing to talk to that at some other point. So with that, I thank everybody for their time on this. We're going to move forward to the next item, which is human resources. And item one is the personnel report from civil service as submitted. There are no legislative items. And with that, we do have need for an executive session for litigation, real estate, and negotiations. So with that, I would ask for a motion for executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
What's the exact section for again?
Litigation, real estate, and negotiations.
Man, everything.
Commissioners Kavanaugh and Rogers.
Yeah, no.
Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.
I gotta take care of one item quick. If you wait, I'll give you, I know you want to talk. I know.
I only have two votes, so I don't know.
Did Mark, Mark and I vote you?
You were the two that voted?
I've heard Jim say yes.
Okay, we'll just say that works. Yeah, all right, motion passes.
We need to turn the mic off before you say that.